I'll call me to order, please write for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward Nebrassica m body, the city of Seward, a by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in Conducting Business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. Any citizen may address the council regarding items included on the meeting agenda. They're asked to complete and submit a speaker card to the clerk. The mayor will call speakers to the podium when the item is being considered. President shall approach the podium, state the name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Kayler.
Here.
Coltrum.
Present.
Streisand.
Here.
Tanya.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Francis Cato.
Here.
Manacorn present.
Thank you. First, five items make up this evening's consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second. A motion and a second, is any further discussion? Saying none, be ready to your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cato, Kayler, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Alright, first item under administrative items is presentation and acceptance of the annual library report. Welcome.
Thank you. I gave you paper copies because I love papers more than my products. We are required by statute to do this once a year.
Thank you.
We include, uh, on the back page, a number of years of comparison just for your own interest. If you care, you can obviously tell when the COVID years were. The window used went sky high, the attendance kind of went quite again, so. Slowly recovering from the COVID years, it's been an interesting time to learn from our patrons what they now want from the library, because it seemed to change over the COVID years, a lot of habits have changed, so. Doing what we can and enticing them to come in through programs, which we've got a couple pages of pictures from last summer. We're hard at work on this year's slate of programming and looking forward to having another great year. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment, so we use the library today for a meeting and my colleagues were with me and they said it was one of the nicest libraries they'd ever been in, so.
One of the nicest, now come on.
Well, one was from Seattle and he just couldn't, he couldn't wrap his head around that a small town this size would have such a nice library, so. It was a high compliment from him, he's kind of a snob, so.
Yeah, makes going to work a lot more fun.
Yeah.
I can say on behalf of me and Jonathan too, whenever we have economic development projects coming to town, Becky and her staff are always accommodating and helping us get set up in there, even during off hours. But we hear the same thing from our economic development partners, that when they come in and see the facility, they're always wowed by the quality of the facility, the technology that we have there, and just the friendliness of the staff, so.
Well, and we, we wanted to reflect what Seward stands for, not just what the library is, so that's our goal.
And on behalf of the city, we've also appreciated with the new lower level renovations that they did, there's a new conference room down there. I know Matt and Rich, myself, Mike and Brandon, we've used a lot. It's just more of an accommodating area. We don't have this giant conference room and five people sitting at there, just hogging it up when it could be put to better use. It's just a little bit more of an accommodating space for us, and so we've also appreciated that. So that's been a nice addition over the last year as well.
Rich?
As we head on to the library board, Becky does a very good job of being organized and to the point, and those meetings are run very, very thoroughly, and she just does a terrific job of preparing for everything, so we commend her for that.
Anyone else? There was a motion to accept the report.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second, is any further discussion? Saying none, be ready to your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cato, Kayler, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Thank you. Item two, consideration of voluntary annexation requests is final reading for lot one WCP addition. Are you ready?
We're ready to go.
An ordinance declaring the annexation of certain contiguous and adjacent tracts of land, urban and suburban, in character, more specifically lot one WCP addition to the city of Seward, to the corporate limits of the city of Seward, Nebraska, and extending the limits thereof accordingly. To describe the real estate to be annexed in its boundary to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide free time when this ordinance shall take effect. We don't need to suspend the statutory rule, being this is the third reading. So this is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash three. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Some.
Second.
Motion and a second, is any further discussion? Saying none, the question is, your ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash three be finally passed and adopted. Be ready to your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cato, Kayler, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Alright, thank you. Item three, this is, items related to the reverse osmosis improvement project, welcome, Mike.
Thank you, thank you so much. Uh, so the water chain plant, addition of the third skid, the project is going well. Our skid is being built on the factory floor down in Florida as we speak. There are, there are a couple tiny issues that have come up, primarily due to supply, uh, due to supply chain issues. So we did start this project in design, we signed the design contract with Purpose Associates on July 2nd of last year. So design, bid, procurement of the equipment, and construction is, is just starting right now. Um, is, is happening at a very, very fast clip. Um, so this first change order, we have two contracts, we have a contract with the general contractor install owner procured equipment, then we have a separate contract, that's the second item, second change order, that's for the equipment that is being produced, uh, selected by the city of Seward. So the first contract was for installation of that owner's procured equipment. There was in the plan set that we knew of during the bid phase, it was a question at the pre-bid meeting about control wiring. That portion was not detailed in the plans and specifications that was issued. And so we told, I told the bidders at that pre-bid meeting that any gap in that, um, that design we would handle as a change order. And so that's what this is, and the amount of four thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents represents just one point three percent. There are an additional six pages to that change order that describe Holloway Electric, the electrical subcontractor's cost for the conduit and wire and the work to connect the control panel that comes with the skid with our main control panel that's upstairs in the control room. And so there was just a little gap in the project overall, and that's what this change orders is, uh, is about in cost. The other portion of this is time. So due to the supply chain issues, not our procurement contract, but the suppliers to them. So we have valve actuators, we standardize on a specific actuator, Alma actuator, German-based company, they can't supply the actuators in time, and so that will come that, and usually that is paired with its valve. So the actuator is the electronic controller that takes instructions automatic, opens and closes that valve. And that is going to be delivered separately into the field end of April, we actually don't have a delivery date yet. And so the general contractor, uh, he was supposed to get his equipment delivered on site, uh, no later than March 1st. The skid and most of the equipment is coming March 3rd, including the valves without their actuators. There's another component, the cartridge filter that's a pre-filter, so that the sediment in our raw water doesn't, uh, doesn't clog, the RO system itself, that equipment will be coming in mid-March. And so due to that, we're extending the time for this contract by nine weeks for substantial completion. So we hope that this would be in place before June, and we hope that the whole project would be complete. And due to these two issues with supply chain, we have to extend that time, so the contractor has a fair, a fair amount of time to actually complete the work. So the first change order is an amount of four thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents to Erickson Construction, our general contractor, and an increase in time to substantial completion of nine weeks, with that date being June seventeenth, uh, twenty twenty-five. And do, should I read both at one time, or just?
Well, right now we'll do, we'll run them separately.
Okay.
But are there any questions on egg as far as the change order number one? If you'd like, I entertain a motion to approve that.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, is any further discussion? Saying none, be ready to your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cato, Kayler, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
And item three B is the no-cost change order, uh, number one to the procurement contract, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And so in addition to supplying the equipment that's being delivered primarily on March 3rd, but then also mid-March and the end of April, there's other tasks that the procurement, uh, supplier, power and RO systems, uh, is providing later in the project after installation. And so similarly to the extension of time to the general contractor, we're extending the time to the equipment supplier, also by nine weeks, substantial completion date of June seventeenth, identical to the general contract.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or comments regarding item three B?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, is any further discussion? Saying none, be ready to your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cato, Kayler, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Alright, I believe you have an update on item four?
Item four, uh, so there was a misprint in the resolution that was up for, on the agenda, up for, uh, a vote today. Essentially, this is for our bridge project, which is covered a hundred percent by bipartisan infrastructure law, BIL funds, from the federal government administered by NDOT, uh, for twenty bridges, our bridge was included in that project. Uh, this is for the DIPA portion of the contract, we have a design contract, and we have a environmental services, so it finds, um, any plants or animals that are endangered, archaeological finds in the area, interference with, uh, the, um.
Migratory birds.
I'm sorry, what? Migratory, migratory birds, um, anything else that may occur, the airfield that was out there on the, uh, on the adjacent property. All these things then have to be evaluated, see what the impact is. They are asking the state for an additional sixteen thousand dollars. Unfortunately, the resolution was written to combine both approval by Mr. Amick, the county chair, as well as the city of Seward. And so, uh, we just discovered that today, so we have to pull that from the agenda. So NDOT is going to send us a revised resolution, and we will have that at the next board meeting. So apologize for the discrepancy, but it's a legal document and we have to have it, uh, correct before we have it for approval and signature.
So for that reason, we'll skip item four for now, and we'll revisit at a future date. Item five is consideration of an ordinance to amend city code chapter seventy-eight dash one point one, city council notice of meeting, Greg.
Yes, uh, pursuant to a statutory change by Nebraska Legislature to Nebraska Revised Statute eighty-four dash fourteen eleven, uh, on January first, twenty twenty-five, the notice requirements for public meetings for political subdivisions such as cities changed to the only statutory requirement is that we had to list every public meeting in the paper of circulation locally. And so that could be the Seward County Independent, Lincoln Journal Star, technically probably the World Heritage Council as well, correct Kelly? The statewide paper, probably some other avenues too, but those are the predominant three we use. Obviously, Seward County Independent is our number one. They then are required by the statutory change to place it on their website. And further, there is now a statewide clearinghouse website for every public notice in the state. All of them are on one webpage now. I have seen it, it is massive. There are so many public notices coming out on a daily basis. Um, you can kind of peruse down and find different ones, but that is the new statutory requirement.
So do we have to put it on there, or?
No, 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 we do our normal process, so we have now, for a couple of years, we send in all of our meetings every month. Matty checks in what those are, and then we send in prior to the month, every meeting we anticipate. Again, you still have some of these like called meetings, so sometimes LB-40 will have to meet on an odd day, or the CRA, or even, you know, sometimes the city councils got together on weird dates when we were doing budget and stuff like that. That had a different process, usually we just put notice on the posted spots around town, and then we called it good, kept moving. Well, that changed in this change. Now this, there's a requirement here that even those new updated ones, unless it's an emergency, so that's within twenty-four hours declared emergency, all this other stuff, you still have to send it to the paper, even if you've missed the deadline, so like our deadline is usually Friday afternoon for the following Wednesday. So if I came to work on Monday and I need to have a meeting on Thursday, I've missed the deadline this week for publication. Probably may not even be able to get into Journal Star. And so if I've missed that deadline, I can work with the paper, and they have a system to put it up online and to put it through the clearinghouse still. So with those changes, our city ordinance didn't really match, and so we went back with the mayor, Derek and myself, and had a discussion of where we thought the best use of notification was. And we felt like, right now, a mass majority of people are getting notification from the website. They're going and checking the agenda through Spark Data, which is what you interface with on your iPads. Second best is probably the newspaper, so people that read through it and see, oh, there's a meeting, because I run into tons of people that read that thing line for line all the way through. And then probably the last one is our public notices. Right now, we're posting at the courthouse, city hall, library, and here in the municipal building. And so we said, let's update our ordinances, let's make sure that we have this publication in the newspaper of general circulation along with the newspaper's website and the requirements of the new statute. But we said, we would prefer, for purposes of us not chasing around last minute and trying to get into these buildings, if we could just post at city hall, which is where all the stuff is and all the agendas are anyway, and the library, because it has the most foot traffic, and it has the most foot traffic outside of the hours that the city hall, the city halls open. I asked Tim and Sarah if anybody's ever come in and looked at their agendas in this building, and they said, absolutely not. We've never seen anybody look at them, ever. And then the board at the courthouse is just getting to be ridiculously busy, there's just stuff everywhere over there. So we, we just felt that the most appropriate place is to put them in the city hall and the library. Our website will be the other one required by the new ordinance, and then obviously all the news organizations. But if you want the official, official spot, check that clearinghouse on the website, the state side, that has everything. But, so we just updated and cleaned this up so that it kind of matches what the state wanted us to do, uh, and eliminate two of those spots, we don't think we're seeing a lot of foot traffic looking at our stuff.
Should, should that website, the one you just referred to, be in this ordinance?
Uh, it says, as, the website's as required by Nebraska Revised Statute eighty-four fourteen eleven. We just.
It's included in it.
It's included in it, we put it general, so when they change it, we don't have to go change the code every single year.
So there would be links up on our website to it?
We already have it on our website.
Okay, isn't it like a clearing?
It's a clearinghouse for everybody else, our agenda is posted on our website, so the stuff for the city is all there.
I, I knew that, but I, I meant that the other websites that you're referring to, all of, all of them and stuff, how, how do you get to that, how do you find that?
Just type it into Google. Just type Nebraska Public hearing.
Or something like that.
Yeah, and it will pop up.
And then you can search by city that you want to look at, or wherever county, and then it'll go in there. It has all kinds of notices for like public auctions, public bids, public meetings.
It's a bit mush.
It's a lot.
You keep track of that.
It's like walking into an office, there are just stacks of paper where no one knows where, no one probably knows where everything is.
Is that Matty's new job?
Yeah.
Keep track of all that.
Yeah.
Which pile is that in?
Uh, maybe for YouTube.
Right.
Maybe for YouTube.
Just wrote generic in the city's website in case we ever change our domain, so we don't have to change our city code, just whatever our city website's going to be at that time.
So, we think this covers everything that we do, we think this hits our highest foot traffic, and it directs us in, in congruency with the revised statute changes, so.
Any questions about that? It's just about trying to strike the right balance between what, you want, you want to make sure the public's informed, but do it in a way that makes sense and is efficient, and obviously in compliance with state law, so. But that was, would you like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Alright. An ordinance of the city of Seward, Nebraska, amending chapter seventy-eight of the Seward Municipal Code, relating to city council agendas, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, provide an effective date. The ordinance has been read by a title that designated as ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seven, would anyone, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to suspend this statutory rule.
Some.
A motion and a second, is any further discussion? Saying none, be ready to your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cato, Kayler, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Again, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seven. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
I'll move.
Second.
A motion and a second, is any further discussion? Saying none, the question is, your ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seven be finally passed and adopted. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cato, Kayler, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
This is the last ordinance for this evening, so I need one final motion to make the ordinance as a part of the permanent record.
Some.
Motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cato, Kayler, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Next, we have the city administrator's report.
Uh, lots of stuff going on, um, continue to work on a pretty substantial LB-40 application, um, and working through with those applicants, trying to finish that up to the liking of LB-40 so that they can make final determination on that. That's taken significant time. Um, continuing to work with NPPTD on our contract negotiations, we were supposed to go off to Norfolk on Thursday, but it just got canceled because of weather, but I will be involved in the low Q process, because I am on, serving on that committee, so we will meet via Teams on Thursday on that. So, again, this all kind of relates into our need to get additional electric capacity here in Seward and Seward County, um, and also what that's going to look like costing us in the long term with those new contracts across the state. Uh, working with some different fiber providers, both ALO and then Segara, which used to be United Private Networks, on some different projects that we have going and getting buildings connected. Uh, I hosted tours at the Wellness Center yesterday for Seward Public Schools, because Joel was at a volleyball tournament for his family. Uh, we'll talk about a bunch of the real estate stuff with Kelly's in our exec session that me and Kelly have been working on. I'm trying to work through, a big one that we've been working on that you'll note in there, is, is just the kickoff for it, but it will take up a lot of time for, between now and the Fourth of July, is working on an incident action plan specific to the Fourth of July, uh, with some of our largest anticipated Fourth of July events coming up, with the opening of the Time Capsule this year, and then I believe, uh, the sesquicentennial?
I can't pronounce it.
Whatever it may be, some sort of.
Semi-sesquicentennial.
There you go, thanks Jonathan.
Clark's thing comes off his tongue, I don't know.
Yep, so that would be the two hundred and fiftieth?
Is it two fifty?
Two hundred and fiftieth.
Two twenty-five.
Two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the United States of America, seventeen seventy-six, do not, there we go, whoa. That will be next year, so it'll be a fun Fourth of July, but with more people coming into town and the changing needs of emergencies and, you know, we had a nice little shock to the system with our CDC uh, truck incident the other day, and so Chief Peters is kind of leading a group that includes anyone from the county and emergency management, NEMA, FEMA, all the way up to the FBI, uh, involved in that effort to just kind of work together, plan, tackle different noted potential, because we know what's going to happen, where things are that day, so you can kind of be a little bit more focused. Um, so a good group that's going to kind of work on that over time here and build up for the next couple of years, so, but that would be a big effort. Uh, the TERF committee continues to work on our project, uh, meeting with Concordia and Dr. Fields on Friday on that one, to continue moving that forward. Uh, and then probably one of the biggest ones just in city hall is our conversion to Casell has gone live. It's crazy. You just kind of have to rip the Band-Aid off and go. Um, so, uh, I commend our city hall staff, they're listening in today. I think Dana sat in on a payroll one all day, training, just learning our payroll system and actively working payroll to process it through and all the, the stuff that goes with it. The reason I bring that up to you is one of the biggest changes that you'll see Matty and the staff rolling out uh, to everybody is a conversion from what is Forte, which is our online bill payment system, to Express Bill Pay, which is the Casell version of that. We basically got to get everybody signed up and informed that if they're paying their bill and they've signed up through Forte, now they have to re-sign up through Express Bill Pay. The other one is anybody receiving their bill right now via email, even if you're on auto pay or anything else, to get the emailed one, you also need to sign up for Express Bill Pay. We will be mailing all bills this month, so everyone's going to get a bill in the mail, but we're going to have a concerted effort through social media, emails, because we have everybody's emails, we'll email people. Uh, we tested the system out tonight, um, to try and get ahold of people, so we're going to get a lot of calls. I didn't get my bill, I didn't see my bill, and we're going to have to just work through that. But we're going to try and share that, so if you get an opportunity to share that with friends, family, and things like that through town, uh, Express Bill Pay, uh, it's not some like random junk mail, it's something you need to get into and get signed up so you can utilize that system. But it'll have nice bells and whistles, and we'll continue to utilize that to get more information to customers and stuff, so they can track things and go back and look at stuff, but we're moving over, so, there you go. I can answer any other questions you have on anything in the report.
One question, so when you send out bills this month, will there be something you send out? Like a notice that the system's going to be transferring over, or is it just all going to be through email, social?
We tried to look through our billing, but our billing, remember, if you do get it, it's just on a postcard.
So no more postcards?
No, you'll still get the, if you were getting the postcard, you will continue to get the postcard. But like for me, I just get an emailed bill and I'm on auto pay through my bank. So, that's just my check, and I look at it and go, good, my water didn't run for six hundred days straight, and I owed two thousand bucks on my water bill. But other than that, that's just my check, that's the only thing I get is in my email. That isn't coming anymore until I go to Express Bill Pay, sign up to get an emailed bill, and then I'll get my bill. Because after next month, we're probably not sending them all out.
I almost got the postcard.
Honestly, the other one, we, we would just recommend, we would strongly recommend that everybody go to the email system, because the other thing we've learned, and Matty and Derek have seen the struggle in city hall is real, is especially during the holidays, we had a massive amount of bills not making it to people's doors. And we were like testing the post office, like we, we were sending them to like people's houses we knew, or they were in the office to see when they'd get there, and we were having major issues with untimely billing. And a lot of that, it's not specifically anything that Kay or the local post office is doing, but our mail goes to Omaha and it gets sent back to us, and when it goes to Omaha, I'm being honest with you, I think what's happening is they're going during the holidays, the priority is getting Amazon gifts and packages out, and we'll take this tote of stuff and we'll get to it when we get to it. And I think that's happened both years now. They've tried to tell us it's their sorting machine, but magically in June, July, August, we don't have this issue. And the sorting machine works just fine, but when it becomes really churning, we're getting, we're having a lot of late issues. We have a lot of people show up saying, I didn't get my bill, I didn't see it, the first thing they get is the delinquent notice, and then they're like, I didn't get my bill, and we're like. And that's a standard requirement everywhere, I mean, you have to be the responsible party, you know when the bills come out. If you didn't get it, you should call in, check in, do those things, but I think people just get on such a cycle. It works like clockwork till it doesn't, so, um, recommending to people to go to the email system is actually preferable. Uh, it's going to be way more reliable for them to get current accurate information and get signed up. If they find themselves in a pinch, they go through, they're already signed up on Express Bill Pay, put in their credit card information, pay. Uh, the last one also is we will not be taking credit cards out of the phone anymore. That is a security issue for our customers, and so they've done it for years before I ever got here, but with Casell, we, we won't do that anymore. And so they've done it for years before I ever got here, but with Casell, we, we won't do that anymore. So we'll either send you a link and you can go pay through that link and portal or a text message, but we are not taking that. That's unfair on our employees and, and just can have a security issue if you, somebody was being nefarious about that. Not they, they went to city hall to do that. But that is not standard practice anymore in most places to take, especially the volume we were doing. I mean, it was significant, so. Express Bill Pay, we'll get some social media and stuff out, please share that out. Let your family, friends know that it's important to get signed up, because it will keep them informed and be an easier way for them to get their bill. There you go. Kirsten will be very proud of me. Anything else in my report?
If not, I entertain a motion to accept the report.
Summon.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Calo, Kayla, Tonya's, Colton, Singleton, Streisand, Warden, seven, zero.
Thank you. Can you feature requests for council agenda items or mandatory actions? Saying none. Uh, Jonathan, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
What's going on in Seward?
Oh, so much good stuff. Alright, uh, Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, next Wednesday, uh, we are moving ambassador calls because of the weather, as you can imagine, uh, because tomorrow's going to be cold, and next week should be beautiful. Uh, we're doing two, uh, business transitions that we're celebrating, chapters, books, and gifts, and Little Cub's daycare, two thirty and three thirty. We'd love for you to join us. Friday, March twenty-eighth, we'll lunch and learn discussing the personality assessment tools of True Colors and Working Genius, starting at eleven thirty at our wonderful Seward Memorial Library. Saturday, April twelfth, will be the annual cleanup day at the Seward Horseshoe Facility on South Columbia. Um, this year, as we do every other year, we're partnering with Four Corners Health Department, uh, to conduct hazardous waste cleanup. We, again, appreciate the partnership with the city of Seward for that annual community development event. Thursday, April twenty-fourth, will be the annual business anniversaries luncheon to celebrate local businesses and organizations in Seward County, with five-year increment anniversaries, anywhere from five to a hundred and fifty years, and nearly everything in between, and you're welcome to join us for that. And then lastly, to put on your radar, we have Seward County Gifts Week coming up, April twenty-seventh through, uh, or to May second. And we look forward to celebrating many worthy charitable causes during this upcoming week of giving. We had forty projects last year. That, that's all. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Jonathan. And next we have strategy session.
I move that the city council go in a closed session with the mayor, the city administrator, the city clerk, and the city attorney for the protection of the public interest, and to discuss real estate interests and provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance for a period not exceed thirty minutes.
The motion is a second.
Second.
The motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Calo, Kayla, Tonya's, Colton, Singleton, Streisand, Warden, seven, zero.
The council is going to go into closed session at seven thirty-four PM for the protection of the public interest and to discuss real estate interests and to provide the city attorney with a negotiating guidance. No formal action will be taken. We are in closed session. Is that a big emotional?